All right, welcome everyone to the council study session for January the 8th, 2024. 6:00 PM, the council chambers. And Mr. City Manager, I'll, if we could, let's, can we go with the charter presentation first and then talk about rental ready as number two, if that's okay, to have that change of process? So, very, very good. And do you want to do any introductions, or shall I do the introductions?
Let's just get on with the show.
All right, so Jackie Summer is the chair, she's going to do the presentation, so Jackie, welcome and thank you for all the work that you, you and all the committee have done. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you. Mayor and council members, good evening. I'm Jackie Summer, I'm Chair of the Charter Review Commission, and with me tonight is the Vice Chair, Tom Waters, who's going to be handling the clicker for the PowerPoint, and also other members of the commission. I'm gonna, I'm gonna call the names of the commission members, and if you would please stand up when I call your name. John Allender, don't believe he's here, Les Boatwright, Patrick Casey, Carmen DeHart, Bruce Frakes, Nick Huff, Kevin Lathrum, Mark McDonald, Terri Steele, and Tom Waters. And I hope that you have had time to look over the redline version of the charter that was sent to you. I know it's a lot to read. And so, this presentation is going to be more high level, and, but I encourage you, if you have specific questions, to interrupt me, or whoever's speaking at the time, and go ahead and ask us that question while we're thinking about it, we're fine with that. And if I can't answer the question, it'll either be Mr. Waters, or some other member of the commission, you know, who has a better memory than I do. So, our first meeting was on January 17, 2023, and our last was November 21st. We met twice per month. We met for two hours at each meeting, and we started at the very beginning of the charter, and we worked our way through it, and we looked at every word in the charter. The current charter is 60 pages. Our version, after almost a year, is about half that. We, while we were working, we looked at charters from other cities in the area, Blue Springs, Lee's Summit, some maybe occasionally from outstate, or even in Kansas, a Jackson County charter, they were all significantly smaller than ours. So, our goal was, or my goal as Chair, was to make our charter easier to understand, more efficient, updated, to comply with current laws, and to allow the city organization to change and evolve more easily as needed, without removing things that we thought were necessary to stay in the charter. We used, in addition to the city charters and county charter that I told you about, we also relied a lot on the National Civic League Model City Charter. We heard from, and relied substantially on City Manager Walker, the City Councilor and his staff, they were invaluable to us. Mr. Larry Blick spoke at one of our meetings about the recommendations of the Mayor's Advisory Commission Ethics Reform. We, that was in Article 5 of the charter, so we kind of had to keep postponing that until they were ready to come to us with their version. So, we were very appreciative of him coming to speak to us. And I also would like to recommend, or recognize, although she's not here tonight, Lindsay Gallman. She acted as kind of our clerk, our liaison, don't think she had done this type of work before, but she was absolutely fabulous. We couldn't have gotten through it without her. She had, she typed in real time as we were going through the charter, and she was wonderful. I also want to thank Steve Wagner, who is in Communications, he handled our computers, our streaming, and our mics, and helped us when we had kind of last-minute problems with those, that he was also very nice to work with. So, you appointed 12 citizens with various backgrounds and viewpoints to this commission, and I believe, and I think we all believe, that that was a wise decision. It was a good number, we had really good attendance, we never had the issue of having a quorum, I think partly because of the number, 11, it was easier to get a quorum, and we just had, people just came to our meetings. And if for some reason they were going to be, not able to be in person, if they could meet by teams, they would do that. And so, we had several of us that participated a few times over teams, and it, it worked We had healthy discussions involving all of the members, and we voted after every section change, by motion, you know, we follow Robert's Rules of Order. Some of the motions failed, some were very close, but most of them were unanimous. So, we had enough discussion back and forth, that we were almost always able to come to an agreement on something. And it's our hope that you will include all of our recommendations as ballot questions for the independents voters. And I would like to, and have offered to, help and be involved in drafting those questions if you want me to. I did do that for the City of Blue Springs when I worked there. And on behalf of the commission, I want to thank you for the opportunity to serve our city, and to be a part of this needed review of this essential document. I also want to mention, this wasn't in any of the documents that we sent to you before this meeting, but I found it in my notes when I was going through them today, that we were very careful to follow the Missouri Sunshine Law. All of our communications, we didn't communicate among each other, except for a couple of times, like if I had to be gone, I would talk to Mr. Waters about, you know, so he could handle and take my place. But if we got any communications from anyone outside, those went to Lindsay and the city staff. We tried not to discuss anything outside of the meeting. And everything that came to us, we gave to the city, we discussed it, we wanted to be completely open about communications that we got from the public. We, like I said, we voted after, I believe, every section if we made a change to it. We didn't have a public speaker item on our agendas, we, but we did encourage citizens to communicate with us, or with Lindsay, by email, and then those were distributed to everyone. We wanted to remain an independent body, if, and so we didn't talk to you elected officials about it, either. I had one communication with the mayor, and I made that public during the meeting. Ready to get started? Okay. First off, you've received a memorandum that I wrote, of a list of items that we discussed as a body, but we, for the most part, did not include them in changes to the charter, but they were important to us, and important enough to us, to ask you to please review that list. So, if anyone didn't get that list, would you let Lindsay know, and she'll, she'll send it to you? So, I hope you had a chance to look at that, but some of those things might overlap a little bit. So, starting with, I'm not going to go through the, this article by article, but there was a big change added to Article 1, and this was public engagement. This came, the, most of the language of this change came from the model charter, and we felt like it was a forward-looking area for this city. And I believe Mr. Walker told us that it had come up in, in discussion topics at conferences that he's been at with other city managers. We also want the city to be more inclusive, and we felt it talked, it talked about that, too. This is a, a big change. It doesn't have a lot of requirements, it doesn't use the word "shall" too much, it does some, but mainly it uses "should." And so, we feel like that is a first step in heading in a more open, inclusive, and We, we left the number of city council districts the same. We did get, we did see a letter from Mr. Jason White, that came to us kind of towards the end of our meetings, and we discussed it thoroughly, and we felt it was a very well-written, very well-researched document, and so, we ultimately made the decision that we think it's important to look at, and we'd like for the council to look at it, probably the next Charter Review Commission. So, we didn't make a decision on that. So, we, one way to kind of shrink the size of our charter was, we used, we simplified, we clarified, and we used legal authority language in several different places throughout the charter, including council and mayor vacancies. We added, I think specifically, that the city manager does direct all departments. We looked very closely at personnel in the merit system. We simplified that, and we tried to avoid conflicts with the Ethics Reform Advisory Commission recommendations. I don't know if those have been finalized or not, but we want, we didn't want to conflict with that. So, a lot of the language, we took it out, hoping that it will eventually end up either in rules of procedure, or regulations, or even the Code of Ordinances. But these are two things we did require. Did you have questions?
I just want to clarify, did you leave us a list of the things that you think want to, we need to be sure that we attend to immediately, that you have recommended removal of?
For, on the ethics?
Yes.
No.
Okay.
No. I mean, we were, at the time that Mr. Blick spoke to us, we were relying on their findings, and that was before, I think you'd, you know, started going through it line by line. This is what we did require, though. We require that there be a Board of Ethics, and that it shall be funded. We require that there be a Code of Ethics, and it also have appropriate funding to operate. So, that was another large change that we made, so that the council has more freedom to craft your own ethics requirements, which I know you're working on. And then, we removed quite a few sections, or significantly revised and simplified many sections, that we believe really should be in the Code of Ordinances, and/or rules of procedure, whatever the council desires. Other charters that we looked at don't include most of these sections. Some of the language in our current charter, we thought was kind of similar to job descriptions, and we didn't feel like that belonged in a charter. That belongs in administration, or HR, or even the Code of Ordinances. We believe that most of the city departments, there are a few that we left in the charter, but most city departments should be created and regulated internally by the city manager, who reports to the council. And as you know, if it's part of the charter, it can only be changed by a vote of the people. And we want the city to be able to make changes as it's growing and, and evolving, and so we wanted to make that part easier. So, these, I, I think this is the list of departments that we took out of the charter, and ask that you make sure they are somewhere else if you decide to do that. And that's the Coordinator of Emergency Preparedness, the Department of Law, Police, Fire, Public Utilities, the PUAB, which I discussed in my memo, my other memo to you, Public Works, Parks and Recreation, the Department of Health, Finance, and the Division of Purchases. We made changes, but left in the charter, to council powers, rules of procedure, and the Code of Ethics, which I've discussed. Any questions? Let me turn to the second page.
Jackie?
Yeah.
So, your recommendation would be that ethics stay in the charter? You discussed that part?
The, we didn't specify-
Where it would go?
-many actual ethical rules, but we require there be a Code of Ethics.
Okay.
And a Ethics Permission Board, Board of Ethics.
Whether it's in the charter or not, just that it's provided for somewhere?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's another thing I feel like is changing right now, so we wanted to make it simpler for the council to deal with that. We changed the City Management Analyst title to Internal Auditor, and we tried to simplify the internal auditor's duties and qualifications. This position will still be appointed by the council, and, independent, as far as I understand. But our city manager, you know, told us that sometimes it's a little difficult to fill that position, so we kind of wanted that restructured a little bit. We, we provided that records-
Jackie, excuse me?
Go ahead.
Just, of course, I want to back up just a minute to what you said about PUAB. So, if I read it right, your, your suggestion is that the PUAB, a decision-making body, kind of, and, and manage the utilities outside of the council, is that, is that the way that I'm reading that?
Yes, and if you have any specific questions about that, I'm going to defer to another member, would you, do you have anything else you wanted?
Well, I just, I guess I'm wondering if you talked about, you know, what role the council would have in appointing that group, or, you know, how that group might be selected, and then also, the, the, any requirements that for, you know, experience, or background, or anything of, of that group?
Okay. Do you want to speak to that?
Mark McDonald. I, I felt very strongly about this. One of the things, while I was on the PUAB, was that I looked at the disparity of rates, and I went to the, the municipal utility that had the lowest rate, simple, pure and simple. And Springfield, Missouri came up. Springfield, Missouri does not have a PUAB, they have a system that's actually a public utility board. They make the decisions on rates, they make decisions on expenditures, approving a budget, preparing a budget to present to the council, to approve. The council really has a oversight role, rather than a more active role in setting rates. And also looking at the operation side, to make sure that we're getting the best value for our ratepayers. And it was very telling, what the folks down there are doing. In many cases, their rates are 20% to 40% lower than ours. And I know there's a lot of differences down there, and there's industries there that to help fray costs, but they seem to have a very good systematic way of managing the utilities. And I, I think we get caught up a little bit too much on IPL. You know, the rumors are out there, we're out here to get rid of IPL. Well, there's a lot more to our public utilities than IPL. You know, we've got the water, we've got, we also, I think we have some fiber optic, we have this water pollution control, and right now, the way it worked, or way it worked when I was there, probably 95% or more of the time spent was with electricity. And we don't look for, we didn't look for any opportunities for improvement with the water department. So, basically, to answer your question, it's very well outlined, that the council would select the members of the PU, the PUP, excuse me. They've got a difference there in Springfield, where they're actually recruiting, I think it's nine members, it's been a while since I reviewed it, nine members, and seven of them actually were from the area in which they served. Two of them can come from outside the city, which is, I think, a big plus, because we have a lot of, probably some of our larger users of our utilities don't reside in our city. They, they have no part in decision-making for the future. So, it's basically to try and make our utilities run more like a business approach, rather than a governmental approach, that has a lot of political impact driving their decisions. Does that answer your question, the long way around?
May I follow on to that? So, Mark, in Springfield, the requirements for their utility board are that they come with a specific set of backgrounds, so they have to have finance background, or utility background, or business background, or legal background, then they also had an advisory board of like nonprofit organizations to talk about impact to ratepayers and, and low income. Did you give us any guidance on the skills or talents for a public utility decision-making board?
The, what I see as the biggest benefit of all of it, they get to dig into the weeds.
No, I understand that, I'm just talking about charter requirements for the members of that public utility.
No, I didn't look at that.
Okay, thank you very much.
All I looked at was, just like you said, they had, and I watched a couple of their meetings, actually, that it was very well-rounded. I think their chairman is actually a, come from a nonprofit organization, to make sure that they take care of folks that have troubles with paying their bills. So, there's a wider rate.
And could I add that we did not put that into the charter? That was in our separate recommendations-
Very good, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else for Mr. McDonald? Okay, thank you. Okay. We tried to modernize our record-keeping requirements. You know, our charter's, I don't know how many years old, but it requires a lot of paper documents, and while I know that there are some paper documents that still need to be kept, we tried to change the charter language to give the authority to change that to electronic documents. That, we have to be careful, because state law hasn't kept up with the times, so we, we tried to word it so that it also has to, you know, follow state law, but we want the authority for the council to make that change, as you can. We, there was, there were several instances within the charter that asked, or allowed for criminal prosecution for just some different things that we, as, as a commission, felt really were not enforceable. And, for instance, charging decisions are not made by the charter, charging decisions are made by prosecutors, and the law has changed on municipal prosecution in the last six or seven years. So, we wanted to make sure that that was, that was changed and updated. So, we took out a lot of the misdemeanor language within the charter. So, I think it's still, I think code violations can still be prosecuted, but specifically charging someone, we took out. We made removal of the city manager, we made that it requires a supermajority vote of five members. Kind of going back to prosecuting and the court, we added a provision in the municipal court article, that might raise some ruffles and feathers among attorneys and the municipal court. But what we did was, we wanted to allow for this council, if necessary, because of financial reasons, or some other reason, to be able to move the municipal court functions through the circuit court. Other cities in Missouri have had to do that, luckily, Independence hasn't, and a lot of the major cities haven't. But it is becoming more and more expensive to operate municipal courts, and we're, we're aware of that. We are not asking you to change that now. And we did add specific requirements for that to happen, I believe we required a public hearing, and then maybe a supermajority vote to do that. So, we feel that that would be a big, big step, but it is something that is a possibility that might be required in the future.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
So, in this section, I know it's been in the charter forever, that the municipal judge is appointed only by the mayor, and doesn't require a vote of the council, and doesn't go to a vote of the people. And I'm just curious, I saw that you didn't change that, is there, can you help me with that rationale?
I do not recover, I recall a discussion of that, do you, Mr. Cover?
Well, there's a, there's a judicial nominating process that goes through a, there's actually a separate commission, so it, I, I'm going off of memory. I think ultimately it is an appointment by the mayor, but it's on the recommendation of a whole separate process. And so, it is my recollection that, that no, that process wasn't, that the commission did not recommend changes to the current appointment process. The only thing they did do was make it clear that if the council, you know, opted to, to transfer the municipal court to the circuit court, then none of that process would no longer apply, because obviously, the, the city wouldn't be in a position to select its own municipal court judges if those cases are being heard there, so, are being heard over at the circuit court. So, that's the only, so I don't believe, I have it here, but without going through everything, I don't recall that there were recommendations to change the process itself, there was just the, the recommendation that there's sort of the workaround, if the council were to decide to transfer operations to the circuit court.
Thank you.
And there was, I will say, extensive conversation about that process, and, and it's my recollection that in the end, they opted to, to generally leave it intact. I'm looking over there to see if any of them disagree with me, but that, that's my general recollection.
Any other questions on that? Okay. I think I'm going to skip the next slide. Okay, now to elections. Again, a big change. And we had a lot of discussion, I think the discussion on elections went two or three meetings long. And so, the biggest change that we are recommending is no longer have primary elections. We started that discussion because the Charter Review Commission received a letter from the Jackson County Election Board, kind of recommending that. And this letter set out the costs of that, as you know, that's the only thing on the ballot in February, the city has to front the entire cost of that, or pay the whole cost of that. If there's anything else on the ballot, you know, it's apportioned. We also, Mr. Walker did a really good job of researching other cities in Missouri, and how many held primary elections for their city council, and there were only two, Kansas City, and I don't remember the other one right now, but it's not used in other cities. So, we, that was a close vote, but we did vote to no longer have primary elections. We are asking that if the council puts that on a ballot, that that be on a separate question, because I think that might be controversial. We had a long discussion about the, just the regular campaigning process, whether to use, candidates could use party, you know, affiliation, and of course, it's not on the ballot, but under the current charter, you can put it on your signs, and your brochures, and everything. We took that out, but we didn't prohibit it. So, it, again, that is something we deep, we got deep into. So it, again, that is something we deep, we got deep into. We also talked about the petition process to become a candidate. I personally think that that's burdensome, but I did not win that argument. And so, again, that's another thing we talked about. It's the number of signatures and the timing of it. And does that encourage candidate, is it good to encourage more candidates? Is it good to limit them because they have to use the petition process? And so the end result was, we left the petition process as is. We added that district boundaries be reviewed and possibly redrawn after the census, decennial, is that the correct word? Every 10-year census performed by the federal government? We think that's important. We took out, there were a lot of forms in the election section that were outdated, and we'd like the ability to be able to change those as needed. So we took those out and we asked that those forms be at least distributed by the city clerk's office, which I believe other cities do. One thing we did add was, there was, there's a section that talks about incompetence of candidates. I'm sure many of you know that that was the subject of a lawsuit not too long ago. And so we added the, and I think incompetency is a legal term. And so we added adjudication of incompetency to that. Another kind of big change is, we went, we recommend going back to using random drawing for the candidate placement on the ballots, only for the first day of filing. And this, we would ask that the city clerk's office handle that. I know it's done in other cities and it works very well, and I think it was done here at one time. But, you know, we don't want people having to camp out on the sidewalk in front of City Hall to be first on the ballot. So we went back to random draw, drawing of numbers for that. Any, anyone who submits their paperwork after the first day will just be first come, first served after that on the, where you are on the ballot. In one of the forms that we took out, it had a requirement that candidates cannot be delinquent on taxes, and at least the types of taxes you can't be delinquent on. So we, we added that back in because we took the, the form out. So there was some, a lot of changes in elections that we had some spirited discussions on. Next is the initiative referendum and recall process. Again, this is a topic that we talked a lot about. We, we want to make that ability for citizen participation, we want to keep them to be, we want them to be able to participate in it. We don't want to make it unduly difficult. On the other hand, we don't want frivolous petitions for recall, for referendum, and for initiatives. So that was, that was a huge discussion among us. We did clarify that the referendum process, and that is to remove an ordinance that the council has passed, that it does not apply in certain situations. And those are existing contracts, budget, capital program, appropriation of money, levy of taxes, zoning, or salaries. So we think it's important that even if the referendum process is successful, that it doesn't make those types of changes. They should only be handled by the council. Another thing we tried to update, we're kind of stuck because a lot of this is still in state statutes, so we gave the authority to change publication requirements from a newspaper of general circulation to, to be on the city's website. I understand that this often comes up in the state legislature to make that change, and I guess it's never happened. But I think eventually it will. There aren't going to be that many newspapers of general circulation in the future, I predict. Luckily, we have one here in Independence that we use, but we don't know what, what that'll be in the future. So we gave the, authorized that, those being posted on the city's website. We added a restriction on budgetary transfers and loans to prohibit transfers from utilities. We thought the current language wasn't very clear, and it was important to the majority of our commission that that be clarified. I don't know if that, any, are any questions about that? I'd have to have someone else speak to it. I'm not a budget person. We required an ordinance to set financial policies, which was supported by our city manager, Walker. We moved bond language and debt statements from Article 10 to Article 8. We thought it made more sense to combine those and put those there. We, when we got to Article 9, which is a really fun article to read, if you've got a chance, we got rid of almost all of it. And it's now one paragraph, I believe. So, any questions about that?
Article 9 is my favorite one.
I know, mine too.
It references clairvoyance, and coal scuttle workers, and dairy hands, and it just really points to how old this document is. So, a special shout-out to the amazing list that is in there.
Yeah, someone spent a long time drafting that. Next slide. Okay, so Article 10, again, this mainly, what was in Article 10, bond notes, we removed those and put, we moved them to Article 8 under financial management. We did add a requirement for the council to approve a financial policy. And our legal counsel, thank you very much, gave us more current and up-to-date legal language to conform to state law for bonds. Now, the next article would be 11. I recused myself on Article 11 because I had a possible conflict of entrance, of interest. Is there anything you want to say about that, Mr. Waters?
Yes, briefly. Before I talk about that, though, since I've got the microphone, I just want to say what an amazing job our chair has done. I know we, everybody's shaking their head. Professional, she made sure that we stayed on task, but gave us plenty of time to discuss and analyze and debate. And it was an excellent choice, and I just want to recognize the job that she has done through this. Article 11, my, my comments are very brief. We really left most of the, much of the language for this section, but we, we removed anything that was already covered by state law. We also recommended removing this section regarding contracts. We felt that the amounts were outdated and the process is adequately handled by either ordinance or state law. We removed sections regarding special tax bills. Those are also regulated by state law. And again, a lot of description about sewers and sidewalks and property codes and condemnation, all which are really already handled by either local ordinance or uniform code. So that was a really pretty simple section.
Next, we removed a lot of the language in planning and zoning, but we did leave the requirement that we do have a planning commission and a board of adjustment. A lot of that is statutory and also could be in rules of procedure and that sort of thing. So we, so we did kind of clean that up a little bit. We changed the term master plan to comprehensive development plan. I believe that's what's being used now. So that, that was the main change for that area. Our legal counsel recommended simplification and changes to franchises and privately-owned utilities. The state law has changed a little bit on that, so we wanted to update it. It's another area that I'm not competent to discuss. So if you have any questions on that? Mr. Cover? When it comes to the charter, we would recommend that the charter be reviewed at a minimum of every seven years. Can be reviewed more often than that, but seven at a minimum. And we did like your 11-member decision, and so we are asking that you keep that or more, 11 or more, and that the mayor will appoint the chair. And then lastly, we did remove, there was this long legal description of the city at the end of the charter. I don't know when that was drawn up, but I know there have been a few annexations, de-annexations, changes to that. So we just took that out. We believe that those records are kept elsewhere at the city, so there's no reason to have those in the written charter. I think that's it.
Please proceed.
So, any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. So you, you made reference to the, to dealing with, I think it was Article 8 separately, maybe, I may have the wrong article, but about, I think was the, the political side of things. Let me get back to that here. Election recommendations, that piece of it, especially about the primaries and, and that question. Did you have any discussion relative to how, how we might propose that things go to the voters relative to, you know, all at once, in article by article? I mean, because, you know, one article impacts another article, and so, you know, there, that creates a lot of challenges, I think. And so I'm just curious as to what your, what your discussion might have been, if, if there was any.
We know that that's going to be a tremendous task, to draft and to determine how many actual questions to put before the voters, because this is a lot of change. And I, we didn't get into details on that, but other than the fact that we think that the primary should be a separate question on its own, there may be others that, you know, we determine are so maybe controversial that they also should be in a separate question because we don't want people, like, to vote no on that, and it includes some kind of other important things in it. So I think there's a way to kind of group the legal updates and organization and things like that, so that we don't have voter fatigue when it comes to voting on these different sections. But this is going to be a, a big task, and it's going to take a while, and it's going to need council input on it, absolutely. And, and again, I have volunteered to help. I've been asked to, but I certainly would be, would like to participate in that.
Okay, that, that's helpful. I just wondered if you'd had, how much discussion you'd had, because I, that just, you know, strikes me as a, a major question.
It is, it is.
And so, okay, all right, thank you. That's all I think I have.
Thank you.
So you left us recommendations for an 11-member body every seven years. Do you have any other advice for future councils on the mix or things that you think would have made things work better?
I've read, again, I don't know how far this council has gotten on organization of boards and commissions, but I really like the language that so far has been proposed, where there's a, I'm probably using the wrong word, but a liaison from the council, and then a staff is assigned, which is kind of what we did. We didn't have anyone from the council, but we did have our city manager, who was so much help to us. So we, I would definitely ask that the city manager and the city counselor attend all I liked the mix of backgrounds that our members had. We had financial people, experts. We had utility experts, I'm going to say, who, we had a couple of attorneys. I would say don't get too many attorneys, because you know, you know how that would go. It worked well with two, I think. When we, actually, both of us retired. Do you guys have any suggestions on that? I think we did have a very mixed. Yeah, yeah, we had, we had some really good input.
And then there was lots of discussion about whether these should be publicly televised. We ended up voting yes on that. Did you see that being helpful, a non-issue? Your thoughts?
You know, there were some glitches just because of the facilities. We started out in the utility building, and that failed, I guess. I don't know what happened there. And so then we had to move here. I didn't see it causing any problems at all. Yeah, but, and we had to be bleeped a few times, and I did too, so. I didn't know people watched it, actually. I mean, I, I think it turned out well, doing it that way, yeah. And, and especially since we didn't have a citizen comment section, you know, it's nice that they were able to watch it. We didn't, we rarely had anyone show up, but, you know, we want to make it important that people are allowed to do that. Thank you.
I just, I wanted to address what Mr. Fears asked a moment ago.
Go closer to the microphone.
Yeah. Wanted to address your question. And the very first meeting, we actually spoke about that, because we, we talked about the end game, and we decided, okay, we kind of have a fork in the road here. We can make super simple, maybe necessary, but simple changes to the, to the charter that might get voted more easily. Or we could make what is really necessary, which would be wholesale and difficult, but we, from the very first meeting, we decided we, we really need to make the changes that would move the charter into the next decade and beyond.
It's just a matter of how to put that together.
I agree, I agree. There's going to be, I'm sure, a whole discussion on how to pursue that.
Come up to the microphone, Bruce.
The only thing I was going to say is about Bruce Frakes.
And state your name, so people know who you are, Bruce.
Bruce Frakes, for the Charter Review Commission, is when they discussed the time from the charter review, seven years. And then the time that we spent was appointed and then extended a year. And everybody's birthday got through there, some holidays. But I think 44 years is way too long. So that's a, that's one I would really narrow on as sometime frame less than that. And that's where those, some of the recommendations come from.
Excellent, thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
I just.
Mr. Mayor.
I didn't really have any.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I didn't really have a question. I actually watched a lot of the meetings, and I just wanted to thank all of you for, you know, doing it. I knew it was kind of a tedious job for you at times, coming in twice a month, and there was a lot to get through. So I definitely appreciate that, so, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember, appreciate that.
I was just going to talk about the amazing attention to detail, your forward thinking. I've only read it once, you know, I'm going to have to read it a couple of more times. I've only read it once, you know, I'm going to have to read it a couple of more times to appreciate, but you really did a wonderful job of wordsmithing and thinking about the whole city. And so, just my deep appreciation to all of you, because I'm sure you missed a lot of family dinners to do this, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Please proceed.
Same sentiment. Thank you so much. I know several of you have, maybe all of you at some point, have served on other committees and other volunteer capacities. I know Les serves on another committee at the same time. Herculean effort. Seriously, thank you very much. Mr. Walker, I haven't checked my email today, but it seems to me that it might do us some good, and I'll throw this out since we're all here and it's legal to say it in this capacity. I think we ought to have a strategic planning session to talk about this, how we might proceed, talk about some of the sections individually, but also to talk about how we might proceed about putting this on a ballot, maybe sooner than later. I'd like to do it at a time when Councilmember Stewart can attend as well, so that might mean it's later in the day or on a Saturday or something, but whatever works with his schedule. So, if anybody else wants to weigh in on that, certainly, but I'd like to do that sooner than later.
Yeah, I believe the executive assistant to the mayor and council is already in process of starting to check calendars and figure out a time to do that based on the conversations we've had.
Appreciate that.
And if I could add, I know we had a little discussion at one of our last meetings among the commission members that I, every single person on the commission was willing to come and attend any meetings that you asked us to and participate in those.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, just trying to think through calendars. You know, we need time to consider on a council's standpoint, both are there any changes in there that we feel need clarification or object to? What would be our drop-dead date to get it on what I would imagine would be the August election, would be the next opportunity?
Yes, August would be the next time. Well, technically, there's still a few more days to call for the April election, but obviously, that's not practical. So, the next realistic date would be August, and that would be May 26th is the drop-dead date that we would have to provide certification to the Board of Elections.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I think we can hit that if we put our heads down. At least we give a shot and see if we can get close enough to get the work done in time.
But I agree. Anyone else have other thoughts on that? I was just going to ask the question in the group, because I agree with you, Councilmember Hobart, sooner better than later, and I was going to see if we could meet, and I don't know if folks are available the week of the 22nd through the 26th. And Councilmember Stewart, you'd prefer to meet in the evening rather than, like, at 3:00, right? We met at 3:00 before, so I don't know if anybody has any preference on that.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
So, the 22nd through the 26th is pretty, pretty full for myself and the city manager, master developers, steering committee. We're hitting, and then we have a possible meeting that was moved from tomorrow to the 23rd to meet with Fairmont Development. So, that, that is full for me, that whole week. And since we're talking about it, January 25th, right now, the steering committee will have a public engagement meeting up at Uptown Market from 5:37 to discuss master development and the potential ideas of developing the square.
Would we want to go to the first week of February? The week of the 5th through the 9th? Pardon me?
February 6th is out. That's a primary election for sure, that day.
How about the 7th or 8th, or?
The 8th could work for me.
8th good for folks?
Correct.
Right. Be two meetings in a row? Right. I'd like, I'd like to at least get started. Do we want to do a 5:00 meeting, a 6:00 meeting? What's the people's, what's your choices?
I'm good either way.
Huh?
I'm good either way.
Either way? Councilmember Stewart?
Probably 6:00.
6:00. Is that good for everybody?
What day are we talking about, though?
Thursday, February 8th.
Okay, Thursday would be fine. Thank you.
Does that work for everyone? If that works, Mr. City Manager, or if that works for you, then we're ready to rock and roll on that date. Very good.
Sounds great.
Perfect. Thank you, and I appreciate you bringing that, Councilmember, that way you get everybody here and talk about the calendars, and away we go. Anyone else, other discussion on the charter?
I just want to echo my thanks to all of you for your time and effort. It's not insignificant in any way. I've only gotten through a part of the material at this point, and, you know, and I see how well-done it is, so I just really appreciate it very much, so.
Anyone else, other comments? I just want to say thank you to all of you. I also think Jackie did a great job as chair, and the reason I say that is no one called me to complain about you being chair. And that is, in the world of politics, the matrix of success. The other thing, too, is Mike Janey called, and he's going to do an article about it, because he knew this was going to be here, and he asked me some comments, and I, as Mr. Walker knows, didn't answer the question. I just simply asked him a question. What complaints have you heard? And he goes, none really, and I said, then that speaks for itself, because when you have a group of people who spent an entire year working on a document, as important as this document is to our city, and it's been talked about for years to go ahead and update it, and for you to be the folks that did that, I'm incredibly grateful. You did an extraordinary job. I'm incredibly pleased with the document, and I like the fact that you did it. Council wasn't involved. You worked on it, and I just think that's really, really important, that it was a citizen-driven document, because, you know, it's for the citizens, and so I just cannot say thank you enough for the work you've done. And I'm just extremely pleased, and I, to come to this point and not to have any concerns brought up or any issues brought up is remarkable to me, so kudos to all of you to work very well together. Obviously, you had spirited discussions, but to disagree, but to not be disagreeable and to work professionally and politely is very good. So, I cannot say enough, and I'll stop, so, because I've been told I talk too long.
First time for everything.
That's why we keep, Councilmember Hobart, he keeps me honest, so thank you, Councilmember. All right, very, very good. Well, thank you all. We'll move on to the next agenda item, and Mr. City Manager, I'll let you tee that one up. That's the rental-ready program.
Certainly. So, the council will recall, there were two ordinance brought for your consideration, both pertaining to ensuring that those who were operating as landlords in the city had active business licenses as they are required by city code to do. The council did adopt that ordinance provision for commercial properties, but wanted to have more discussion about the application of that ordinance for the residential properties. So, before we brought that back for a second reading, we wanted to present the ordinance in more detail, get feedback, any questions or concerns, so we can modify that as needed prior to any further contemplation by the council. So, with that, I would ask our community development director, Tom Skennell, to come forward and make that presentation.
You mean the speaker, the?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Tom Skennell.
All right.
As Zach did the introduction, kind of what this presentation, going to review what this ordinance is, what issue does this ordinance address, and how this ordinance would address that issue. So, first off, what is Bill Number 23108? So, that is an amendment to the rental-ready program ordinance, and it would require a landlord to hold an active business license for all of their rental units. So, what that would mean is if you were a landlord and you had 20 properties before a tenant could move into one of those 10, one of his or her 20 properties, that the city would verify that the landlord has an active business license. So, what issue does this address? Back in October, Ms. Becky Haake gave a presentation to the city council, kind of outlining the declining number of licensed landlords, and that was due to a variety of different factors. The city had seen a large number of investors purchasing rental property. We had a lot of already licensed landlords who had acquired or sold one of their rental properties and unknowingly did not update their records that they had with the city. We had homeowners who were selling to investors. A lot of times, you had rental property that was, that was sold, in some cases, that the same rental property was sold multiple times within 30 days. So, all of that was making it very, very difficult to track both the owners, but also the rental units. Some of the past efforts that the city did, trying to track down these unlicensed landlords, going through county records, sending notices to those owners, informing them of the requirements. As mentioned, the city hired an outside contractor, Ms. Becky Haake, to do some of that work for us, to find unlicensed landlords. But in addition, as coenforcement staff are working cases, they are doing a check to see whether the property that they're working the case at, whether that is owner occupied or renter. Now, all of those are great and highly, highly effective. However, they have one big downside, and that is it's very, very time-consuming. Just to give you some examples, in the early years, when the rental-ready program was in its infancy, so from 2017 to 2018, staff spent a great deal of time and found 925 landlords, which accounted for a little over 9,100 units. Ms. Haake, in her research, found 274 unlicensed landlords, which found a little over 1,300 units. The coenforcement check only catches a very small percentage. The reason for that is the percentage of coenforcement cases that are on rental property is smaller than what it is compared to owner occupied, plus you have some duplicate complaints there, so you're only catching a very, very small percentage. So, how would this ordinance address this issue? As mentioned before, when a tenant would contact utilities to set up a new utility account, city staff would verify whether that property is associated with a landlord who has an active business license. That is information that is coming from City Works, that is the permitting and licensing program that the city uses for many of its functions. As part of that, when the city sends out the renewal notices to the landlords, city would include a letter in there informing them of the requirements to update their information, update any units that may have been bought or sold, and give them 90 days to come into compliance. So, this is the first major amendment to the rental-ready ordinance. It's in keeping with the goals and the purpose of the rental-ready ordinance. One thing that I would like to point out, perhaps looking ahead, staff would like to investigate the possibility to amend the ordinance, possibly looking at when there is a change in occupancy, that that would trigger the inspection instead of the mandatory inspection every two years. So, again, that's something that staff could research, and when appropriate, bring forward back to the city council. That concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
So, Mr. Skennell, my, my question is, if you could back up a couple of slides, maybe. So, no, not that far. The one about the 90 days. So, talk through that process relative to somebody goes to, you know, a tenant goes to, or, you know, so typically, you know, a tenant's got to have a lease, they got to bring a lease to the utility and to sign up for utilities. And so, they're going to show up, and they're going to say, here's my lease, I'll turn my utilities on, and we're going to check City Works at that point and say, yes, they're licensed, no, they're not.
Correct.
If they are, then fine, we're off, off and running. If they're not, then talk with me through that process, and especially what happens in 90 days if they don't come into compliance at that.
Yeah, so in the initial kickoff of this new requirement, there is going to be some hand-holding that goes on, and we do want to work with the tenant and the landlord. So, if we do find a tenant that is trying to set up utilities for a property where there's a landlord who is unlicensed, city would still turn on those utilities. That information would then be sent to our business license staff, and as long as the business license staff has the information of who the landlord is, mailing address, and that sort of thing, those business license staff will handle that to ensure that the landlord does get licensed and the units do get into the rental-ready program. So, it's, so the initial phase is more of a, kind of a teaching and guiding versus that regulatory turnoff.
And I think that's, that's good. So, what happens at 90 days that the landlord hasn't gotten licensed, they refuse to license, they are just obstinate, they're whatever, and are not licensed at that point? What are we going to do?
So, the, so the city still has the ability to write the ticket to go to municipal court, to the landlord for failure to comply with the rental-ready program. That is something that we have done since the very beginning of the rental-ready program, and we would continue to do.
Okay, well, that helps me a lot. My concern was, is, you know, somebody shows up to get their electricity turned on or their water turned on, and we say, no, go tell your landlord to get licensed, and, you know, that doesn't make any sense to me at all, to do it that way. But this, you know, to give them 90 days to come into compliance, that's, that's very reasonable. I don't have an issue with that. I think there's some other things, like you've indicated, that we need to do relative to rental-ready, but, but I think this is, you know, I think you've satisfied my concerns, at least in that regard, so I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor. Anyone else? Please proceed.
So, we're no longer talking about turning off their utilities?
Correct.
That's off the board?
Correct, yes.
Good. Glad to hear that.
I do, I do think, though, you know, if somebody gets to 90 days and they haven't, you know, gotten licensed, and they have a new, you know, vacancy and a new opportunity, you know, at that point, I don't have a whole lot of heartburn, you know, by telling the... you know, at that point, I don't have a whole lot of heartburn, you know, by telling the tenant, you know, I'm sorry, they're not licensed, they're not even able to rent property in this city. And so, you know, so until they get licensed, I'm sorry.
No.
I have huge heartburn.
Well, I mean...
Hang on, hang on. The issue is though, that we have plenty of landlords in this town that will gladly collect as much cash as somebody has in their pocket and say, sure, you can rent this place. And that person has spent every dollar they've been able to scrape together and then they go to turn their utilities on and they can't.
Right.
And it's zero degrees out like it's going to be on Saturday and they have no ability to stay warm for the weekend.
No, yeah, that, good point.
So, that's the problem. But I understand what you're saying. If somebody actually came into town and they had a totally vacant place and we had a way to keep track of that, then yeah, don't let them rent it.
Right. We don't have a real way to do that.
Not yet, anyway. We don't yet, anyway.
Yeah.
Now, I would love to see a shorter timeframe. I'd love to see a bigger fines. I'd love to see a bigger hammer, but I'm fine with what your proposal is, Mr. Skinnell.
Well, that's part of what I was thinking relative to some other changes is a bigger hammer and some, you know, some more, a little more...
I know. I know. One of the changes that I've discussed with Mr. Walker, and I don't know if you've passed this on yet, Mr. Walker, we discussed another language change I'd like you to take a look at, Mr. Skinnell, is for out-of-town owners to require local management, meaning they have to have a local management company if they don't have a business here in town or they don't personally live here. We discussed this. Mr. Walker, could you talk about what your sister does in the similar situation type of thing?
So, in the community, what Councilmember Hobart's referring to is my sister is, has an Airbnb property or whatever those things are called, VRBO, in out-of-state. And the community there, because that is a tourist community, they have required that if you're going to be using your residential property for essentially what's a commercial purpose, renting it out, you have to have a local property manager that could respond to whatever manner of issues might come up with that property. So, if, you know, there were building maintenance issues, emergency repair issues, whatever it may be, that there's some sort of person who is, you know, numbers posted and they are to be responsive to whatever issues may come up at any time at those properties.
Yeah. And we have, you know, we have folks that are employees in this town, you know, I would say that, you know, we can have exceptions like that, folks that work here, that live here, or that have businesses here, you know, people that have good connections here and that are local and that can respond. But if you want to be an out-of-town owner, you have to have a local legitimate property management company. You can't just be somebody that randomly lives wherever and that would be for short-term or long-term rentals, either one. Okay, that's all I've got for right now. Thanks.
Anyone else? Please proceed.
Thank you. I know that we talked about having a bigger hammer, but I believe that the state has restricted what cities are allowed to collect in fines, so that may limit some of the penalty side that we can enforce. Am I understanding that correctly?
Correct, yes, yes.
Okay. What do we do about the roulette of LLCs that are swapping properties often with the same mailing address but a different incorporated name every three to six months? I'm not sure how we address that. Do you have thoughts?
So, what was included as part of this ordinance amendment was that any LLC that is seeking that landlord license, they need to file with the city their LLC registration, which outlines a local individual who is responsible for that LLC. That kind of addresses that, but it still doesn't prevent one LLC just forming a family tree underneath the parent to get around taxes and other sorts of things. But we'll do our best to try to gain compliance there wherever we can.
When you're thinking about your rental-ready modifications, I wasn't here when this was passed, but my understanding was that only a percentage of them had to be inspected. So, if I owned, you know, an entire apartment complex, then only a percentage of them required an inspection. Do I understand that part correctly?
So, that is correct. So, and that only applies to apartment complexes. Only 10% of those units need to be inspected. If you are a landlord who owns 100 duplexes, 103plexes, all of those units have to be inspected. It's only those apartment complexes where it's 10%.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else other questions?
Mr. Mayor, please proceed. Thank you. It was probably two and a half months or so that yourself and PD and Matt McLaughlin from the Billing Department, we were sitting down and we were trying to brainstorm and talk about some different ideas on rental properties that become nuisance and also just regular residential properties that were problems and how can we get a better handle on that. And when you brought this up, Mr. Skinnell, PD seemed to be very excited that they were able to work with this through their processes too, to get a better handle on who's actually registered, who's not registered here in the city. So, they were pretty excited. So, however, they have another tool in their toolbox, this is going to help them with that. Also, Mr. City Manager, we've been talking a little bit about how can we, since we're looking at the rental-ready ordinance that hasn't been changed at all, this is the first major look, how can we work with those property owners and individuals who have actually done a good job, who have actually stepped up and did what the ordinance says to do about the two-year occupancy change, when that occupancy is vacant and how to work with that? Can you speak to that dialogue that we've had a little bit?
Yeah, the original idea behind rental-ready obviously was, you know, properties that weren't meeting some of the basic life safety issues, that this would provide a mechanism to routinely get inside of those properties and look to make sure that every property in the city that was being used as a rental would meet those basic life safety measures. You know, as you've said, it's been close to 10 years now that this has been on the books and, you know, one of the things we're realizing is that by and large, we've got a lot of good, you know, by definition of good, I mean, that are complying with the provisions of the city code. You know, when we all go to buy a house, it's subject to that interior inspection, got to pass that inspection before we can close on the house, but we don't have somebody coming through our home on a routine basis, obviously. So, one of the ideas we've been kicking around and Mr. Skinnell referenced it here at the tail end of his presentation is that the trigger mechanism for an interior inspection would become either IA when somebody, you know, there's a landlord-tenant issue that needs to be followed up on. So, if there is still a complaint, that mechanism could exist. But more importantly, the change would be that every time there's a change in occupancy, so that we all talk about this notion of good landlords, presumably then if you're, you know, treating your tenants right, providing a quality place to live, et cetera, I know there's a lot of exceptions, but by and large, that would be an opportunity then to not have somebody parading through the interior of your home every two years, but also then make sure that before a property is rented to the next tenant, that there was that interior inspection. The other part of that we are still exploring and kicking around is that in that first two-year window, if for some reason somebody breaks their lease after a year, that wouldn't require or trigger that change in occupancy because it's already been checked within a 24-month window. So, we're trying to respect, you know, people's privacy while also making sure the life safety issues that rental-ready has really helped address continue to be checked out.
Right. And I think that's important to work through as we're taking this look, to be able to bring these changes when needed. And if my colleagues don't have any objection, I would ask that perhaps that we can work on an ordinance that can be brought up to the council for consideration to discuss that.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I definitely wouldn't object to anything like that. In fact, I was talking to a gentleman the other day and he happens to live in Councilmember Perkins's district, but he owns two rental houses in mine, and he brought up those exact concerns. So, I'm sure if he's feeling that a lot of landlords are, so I would definitely like to see some changes like that.
Just a couple of thoughts based on our conversation here. One is that, you know, I mean, we have a number of long-term tenants in the city, I mean, 10, 15, 20 years. You know, I guess I'm wondering if there's some provision that we just assure that those folks are, you know, living in good condition at some point in time. I'm not sure exactly how we might do that, but that was one comment. The other comment or question is, so if someone, how are we going to kind of police that? If somebody moves out, you say, if somebody moves out, we then would inspect their property. Well, do we know when someone moves out and do we, I mean, could we do that through the utility system or not? Or what's your, what's our mechanism? I'm trying to understand how that, our mechanism for making sure that happens.
Yeah, our thought is that when somebody is applying to get the utilities in their name or that revert to owner, that would be the mechanism that would trigger to Tom's team here, that it was time to have that interior inspection.
Anyone else? Other thoughts? Okay. Any final comments on this? We've got a couple other comments before we close the meeting, but anything else on this topic?
No, I appreciate the feedback in the direction, so we'll finalize the utility aspect of that ordinance and get it in front of the council and then we'll work on these other changes that have been brought up tonight for council consideration.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Skinnell. Okay. You also have some comment?
I have received an application from Ally Zorro to become a member of the Tax Increment Financing Commission. She is being appointed by Councilmember Stewart and I'm requesting the council's permission to add a resolution for her appointment on the agenda for the regular meeting on January I have also received an application from Arthur Freeland, excuse me, to become a member of the Personnel Board. He's being appointed by Councilmember McCandless and I'm requesting the council's permission to add a resolution for his appointment on the agenda for the regular meeting on February 4th.
Councilmember McCandless, anything else?
I just had a request for the City Manager. We have a number of, you know, we have the Innovation Center and they have a huge commercial kitchen in there and we have dozens of food trucks who do their meal prep in there. But if you have a food truck, by definition, it's mobile, but you have to get a food inspection in Independence and Kansas City and Jackson County. And it is a huge amount of time and money for these really small businesses. And I'm wondering if we could at least explore the idea of some kind of reciprocity with, someone gets an inspection in Independence, can it be recognized by Kansas City and the other way around? I mean, the rules are the same, it's just that everybody has to pay and spend the time to get that done. And maybe they can buy a super license that costs a little bit more, we can give a piece to the other municipalities, because I'm sure revenue is the issue that makes all of these municipalities worry about that. But I do think from a small business standpoint, it is a real opportunity for us to think about regional cooperation.
Yes, I'd be happy to work with our Health Department and Community Development Licensing staff and see if we can't get something in front of the council on that as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else other closing comments? And just remember, Don Potts and Mayor Potts in your prayers. Don Potts just passed away, I believe, last few days. So, just keep him in your prayers. Anything else, Mr. City Manager?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. With that, I just want to thank the commission again for all of your hard work. You did a great job and we'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.